I have 6:30, so let's get started. Welcome to the City Council Meeting on February 1st, 2021. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and the flag is behind Jody or me. Let's see, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Roll call, starting with Counselor Madison.
Summer Madison, position one.
Counselor Bradley? There he is.
There we go. Chip Bradley, position two.
Thank you.
Anthony Pagano, position three.
Becky Campbell, position four.
Valerie McGilvery, position five.
Kacey Sadat, are you here?
I'm here for a panelist.
Thank you. You can introduce yourself as Administrator.
Yeah, it's just gonna take me forever to get used to that.
We have Jody Fritz, City Administrator, and Tammy Kaufman, Mayor, all present. And... First item for business is to swear in Counselor McGilvery. Ms. Administrator Fritz, I don't think I have the swearing-in thing.
The first email that I sent, and I can't exit, I'm sorry. How about I send you a picture of it on your phone? At the meeting, you were just trying to dig it out.
It's like it's not in here.
It was in the email earlier in the week.
Ah.
Okay, I just texted it to you. It's super short.
Make sure you're unmuted, Ms. McGilvery. There it is. All right. Boy, this is fun to see. Hope you can see it better than I can. All right, okay, if you would, I don't think we can see you, so we'll just trust that you're raising your hand.
I am.
I, Valerie McGilvery.
I, Valerie McGilvery.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And of Oregon.
And of Oregon.
And that I will do the best of my ability.
That I will do the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Of Counselor, position five.
Of Counselor, position five.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. I should really ask people if they want that alternative before we do these. Okay, well, thank you very much. You are official. All right, and you don't have to vote for us this night, so that's a very good thing, isn't it?
Yes.
All right, next up is the Gold Beach Main Street Business Outreach Committee Coordinator, Lindsay Dixon. Unmute yourself and get started. Did we lose her?
We lost her.
There she is. Let me try. Oh, she says allow to talk. Poor thing doesn't allow to talk.
Thank you. I was just typing in the chat desperately.
There you go. Okay, so attendees, we have to allow to talk and then unmute them.
Yes.
Yeah, well, we just learned something.
And then I had to accept the unmute as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for being our test subject.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I was panicking. It's like I don't have an unmute button. Um, so, good evening, everyone. I'm sorry that I haven't been reporting monthly as has happened in the past with this last year. And in the packet, you'll see the report we submitted to Oregon Main Street at the end of this past calendar year. That goes over some of the events and stuff we held and what we did in that crazy year that just happened. Um, I think, obviously, having volunteer events and other events were a lot more difficult this year. And it became a challenge to have some of the events we wanted to hold. And some projects got a little bit delayed, like our banner project and some of our benches. But we're really excited because the benches should hopefully be here in the next couple of weeks. We're still figuring that out with our fabricator, but there will be 13 new benches at seven new locations. And then we also were successful in holding two drive-through events last year that both followed COVID protocols. And at one of them, we had 350 people at the Halloween drive-through. And at the Christmas one, we had like 458. So those were both really successful, considering COVID. And they both adhered to the state guidelines, which was great, and it's very difficult to do. Yeah, so we also ordered 16 new LED snowflakes. Unfortunately, with COVID, the fabricators were delayed in being able to make those, so we just got them. So they won't go up till the end of this year. But we're really excited about those, and then we're making progress with ODOT about with our artistic banners that will be hung up on poles, hopefully within the next month or so. So yeah, things have gotten a little delayed, but they're all still progressing. Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, that was a, I was gonna ask that, but I muted myself. Counselors, if you have a question, go ahead and unmute. Otherwise, thank you, Lindsay. We appreciate the update. You give us a nice written report. And a nice brief verbal report, so thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, we have a question.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So Lindsay, one of the questions in there that I found interesting was, Oregon Main Street has asked about a new board, let me find exactly, has new leadership developed over the past year? When they ask that question with new leadership, is that regarding terms with your current board members? Or is it the overall development of the existing leaders?
I think that they're asking, this is, I've been a little, probably not as persistent at following this as I should because I think they're asking more about trainings and progression through the leadership capabilities, which of course this year, you know, as my first year in this role, they haven't really had as many trainings. There's been a lot of online meetings, but not the trainings that are typically required for different levels of Oregon Main Street. I think that they're also talking about new leaderships, but not necessarily getting new board members. That wasn't a great answer. I think that like through the committees and stuff too, because there's supposed to be four active committees with chairs there. So I think it's also pertaining, like I said, to the trainings as well. I don't know if that was a very succinct answer, I'm sorry.
Fair enough. Good job, Lindsay. Really appreciate your hard work.
Thanks, Summer.
Anybody else? Okay, Harry Nunn, thank you very much, Lindsay. Next up is Interview Some Possible Appointments for Pretenti and Planning Commission and Urban Renewal. And Mr. Sergio Martinez is up. I think he's unmuted.
I am. Can you hear me?
You are. I am, yes, thank you very much. We appreciate you stepping up, and Sergio was one of the applicants for the City Council position. And I asked all of the council applicants if they'd be willing to sit in another position, and both Kylie and Sergio agreed. And so that's why they're here tonight, and I appreciate that, and I thank you. So we're gonna start with Counselor Campbell, and we'll go around if you have any questions for Mr. Martinez.
Get myself unmuted here. The one question I had was, what are the strengths that you bring to your position?
I currently have a real estate license, and I am working under Century 21 here in Gold Beach. So I, uh, the planning committee directly affects me. I need to be able to follow it and understand any sort of changes to any zoning that may occur already. So I think with my experience in real estate and in my experience in growing up here, and, um, I think I can provide some insight and perhaps a point of view that will be helpful and perhaps, I hope, can contribute towards making any sort of planning successful, I hope. I just know that I have a general knowledge base that I think can be applied helpfully.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir.
Counselor McGilvery, do you have any questions?
I do. Based on your experiences or general awareness of the city, what do you consider to be the strengths and challenges of Gold Beach?
Clearly, a strength is our location. We have beautiful attractions, the Rogue River, our beaches, and just the general environment is a clean environment, healthy. This is, these are talking points I use all the time when just trying to convince people to move here. Another strength, I suppose, would be, in my experience, the community is tight-knit. It's a small community, so that makes sense. And another big strength, on a more specialized aspect, is our disc golf park. I was part of the team that helped to create it, and I play it a lot. It is a really lovely place to be. It is consistently expanding and improving and consistently being shared in social media and in general to visitors here. I think that is a big strength for our city. I hope to improve it more and more, and I hope to bring a little notoriety to our town through that park. Did you ask if we had any weaknesses?
I asked about challenges.
Challenges, thank you.
Challenges.
Well, clearly, a challenge is to, I would say, well, to put it bluntly, provide, uh, to enhance the economy, to provide jobs that pay more to more people. I think that is a challenge. I am willing to help confront that challenge. I don't know if I have any answers, but, uh, I would put that foremost.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Madison, you wanna unmute?
Sorry about that. I'm using the new tablet, so I guess I need to adjust the sensitivity levels. You know, I'm just grateful for both of the candidates that have been willing to apply, and I don't have any questions. I know Sergio in a variety of different capacities, and I think we're pretty lucky to have him volunteer.
Thank you. Counselor Bradley, wanna unmute?
Yep. Throw your softball, Sergio, since I've known you so long. What are some of the ties you have, just not personally, not just professionally, the community that'll make you a good member of the team?
Well, I'm currently on the Ellensburg Theater Company Board. I, uh, so, and I'm active with the theater, even though I believe that has been inactive for nearly a year. And I agree with that it should be inactive. I look forward to being able to perform there again, being able to produce shows there again. I think that is a very good, um, thing to have, especially for young people. I like to perform. I like to dress up as a cat in the hat and read to children at Riley Creek School. It is a highlight of the year for me. And I like to coach. I really love youth sports. My daughters, I have two daughters, so there you go, there's another connection I have. One daughter who is attending Riley Creek School right now, another one will in a few short years. And so I really like to be active with the youth. They're just great. I think we have great kids. Not just me, but in general. And, um, and again, I'll mention the disc golf park, so I'm there a lot. I'm active in the community. I have a library card, which I use. I really love our library. And I used to work at the Barnacle Bistro. I really love our restaurants here. I think we make great food. There's a lot that we do really well. And, um, I, I, I think we have a lot to share, and that is a good reason why people visit here and are visiting here more and more. Yeah, and then I surf in the oceans, so I love the beaches. I love the community that that builds with people meeting on the beach. I really look forward to getting back to a more normal time so that people are able to socialize again. And that's gonna be really great to see how we respond or how we rebound after this very difficult time where no one can really socialize. So I hope that answered the question.
Definitely does. A lot of it I already knew, but I think our people that don't know you as well need to hear some of that, too. Thank you, Sergio.
Okay, Counselor Pagano.
I have no questions for Sergio. Thank you for being willing to volunteer, and appreciate you coming on board.
Okay, does anybody need to follow up, or are we good with these questions? Okay, Harry Nunn, let's move on to Ms. Kylie Smith. Kylie, can you unmute yourself if you're not already? Oh, Kylie, oops, you're gonna, you're gonna beat me up. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Been corrected you.
He did. He got me quick. Oh, okay, so we'll start with Counselor Campbell again. You have any questions for Kylie?
I do not.
And Counselor McGilvery?
I'm gonna come back to the same question. So based on your experiences or general awareness of the city, what do you consider to be the strengths and challenges for Gold Beach?
I would say that the strengths would be the people. I think our community is really tight-knit. Most people are willing to volunteer, help, put their best foot forward. And unfortunately, I would say the challenges would be people as well. I know that's a little redundant, but I think there are some people who are holding our little community back.
Let's see, Counselor Madison?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything, with the exception of extremely grateful to see some of our younger generation in the city step up and participate. We've got some great leaders coming up. Kylie would just be one of many, and so I'm excited for her to set that precedence.
Thank you, Summer.
Counselor Bradley?
I'm gonna go back to the, well, I went with Sergio because I've also known Kylie for a long time, and I think communities should hear her answer on this. What are the things that you bring from your personal life and professional life and ties to the community that's gonna make you a good fit?
I work in the assessment and tax office, so I'm very familiar with urban renewal, with the funds, how they're collected, how they're distributed. A common misconception for urban renewal is that it raises property taxes. So if anybody needs explanations, I'm willing to give those to the public because I do that all day, every day at my job around tax time. And on a personal level, I have a very large family, lots of nieces and nephews that are in the school system. My family all works here. They're working members of our community. I'm currently trying to grow my own family, and I just have a very vested interest in our little community.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Pagano?
I have no questions. Thank you very much for volunteering and being part of it, Kylie.
Thanks, Anthony.
Cool. Anybody have a follow-up question before we move on? Okay, I am going to appoint both of them, assuming that the council approves in the resolution later. Consent calendar, action minutes for January and December. I want to thank the City Administrator for putting that together. Were there any changes that needed to be done? If not, we'll just get a motion to approve. Counselor Campbell, are you gonna make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
That would be Counselor McGilvery, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. I will go ahead and call the question, and we'll start with Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Counselor McGilvery?
Aye.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Bradley?
Aye.
Counselor Pagano?
Aye.
I wonder if we could do that any faster? Okay. Next, next on the agenda is public hearing for the annexation pursuant to ORF 222.120. And I believe we're gonna have the City Administrator introduce this one as our planner. And we will start there. How does that sound? Are you ready?
I am. Okay, so this is not the first time that you have seen this, unfortunately. Um, a similar version, as it said in the staff report, was before you in December.
I thought you heard Chip breathing. I thought that was breathing.
Just make sure we don't have anybody with top mic. Top mic, top mic. Okay, so, as you recall, there were some objections from Curry County. And so we tried to address those, and the mayor attended their Board of Commissioners meeting on the 16th, directly tried to address some of the issues at term. So what we have before us tonight is, it's still an annexation application, but we are processing it through a different ORF. Originally, it was 222.125. This one is gonna be 170. It's a procedural thing, but because of the county's objection, this is what our legal counsel advised us we should do to continue with it. So I don't want to belabor it because we dealt with it a lot of times in the past. But as you can see, things are a little more comprehensive than they were originally because usually annexations are pretty straightforward. We don't require a lot. But just in case we didn't have a record, I wanted everything in there. So the ordinance section is later in the meeting, but for this part, for the public hearing portion of it, if there's anyone that joined, and the mayor will take that part over. So the staff report's there. If you have any questions, we can talk about them either during or after the public hearing portion, and that will be with the mayor.
Okay, so I'm gonna officially open the public hearing portion at 6:55 PM. And, let's see. I'm going to ask people to unmute if they want to, and if you want to speak, let me know. If you are online, you can also put it in question and answers or in the chat that you want to speak. Carl King, you said earlier you didn't want to speak, but I want to double-check. Okay. Cindy Myers, you're new. You were not here earlier. Did you want to speak to this?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I believe that's Ms. Miller. Did you want to speak to this issue?
I think probably Sergeant Miller is just listening.
Oh, that's Sergeant Miller, okay. I was thinking it was somebody else.
And then Sheriff, Sheriff Ariensfar, and I probably pronounced that incorrectly. I'm terrible with people's names. That's Officer Ariensfar. But they're probably just listening.
Okay. Um, they can both type in as well. Margaret House, did you want to speak on this issue?
No, thank you.
Kaylee Clarno, welcome. I didn't see you earlier. Welcome. Did you want to speak on this issue?
No, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Thanks. Kelly Timcheck, I think you're at the next issue, but I'm double-checking.
I'm good on this issue, thank you.
Okay. Lindsay, you type in chat if you want to speak. And Sergio, did you want to speak on this? Doesn't look like it. Okay, thank you. And then Zach, did you want to speak to this issue?
No, thanks.
All right, thank you. Awesome. You guys are really good at this. All right, so we don't have any public input. We did get an email. What's her name, Jody? Oh, Administrator Fritz. Cameron LaFallet?
Cameron LaFallet, and she did respond after that email and said that her concerns had to do with future development that her organization didn't have any concerns about the annexation.
Okay.
And actually, I'm here on the phone tonight, so she said that in the future, when there's proposed development there, they do want to participate in the annexation part, but they did not.
Okay. Great. So in that case, we did not get a request for an extension. So I will close the public hearing at 6:58 PM. That's pretty quick when I had to ask everybody if they wanted input. And does the council want to discuss this now, or do you want to do it in the ordinance section?
And as it said, if any questions, I know that I dropped, you know, like a ton of libraries.
Yeah.
But I also didn't expect it to be every little thing, line by line. But if there were particular questions you had about some of the attachments or how to connect the dots, just call her.
Yeah, so I think what I'll do is I'll just ask the council, let's discuss this after we do this next item because I know there's quite a few people that want to at least hear or may even have input on the next one, uh, which is a citizen's requested item to discuss the Buffington Park Kid Castle. Uh, which is a citizen's requested item to discuss the Buffington Park Kid Castle. And I will let the Administrator Fritz start with that.
Okay, I, um, before this Timcheck had contacted me, I actually had been contacted the week before by Ms. House with similar questions about why other places have their playgrounds open, but our city doesn't have our playground open. And, um, the park is open. I want to make that clear. It's been open since we went into phase two. It's just the rest, the restrooms, the pavilions, and the playground structure, you know, that we call Kid Castle, that those areas are still closed. And the reason for that is we can't meet the cleaning requirements of the state right now and the monitoring requirements for distancing and mask slash face covering. Now, again, the question's been asked to me, well, how can another city do it? And the short answer is, I, I don't know. Um, but I, I don't. Initially, uh, in November, when this came up, I was going to contact other people, but then the point was, it's like, I'm not in charge of other cities. So what they're doing isn't necessarily germane to us. Um, the, the OHA guidelines and, and now OSHA guidelines, um, we can't meet them. And so that's why. It's not because I don't want folks to take their kids to the playground and recreate. Um, it's just we simply can't provide the access to them. The guidelines that are out there right now. And I know that it's just hard right now with all the COVID restrictions. There's so many things that we can't do. And as I said in the report, what other cities are doing, I, I don't know. I can speculate that either A, they're not aware of all of the guidelines, or B, they are and for whatever reason are choosing not to follow them, um, which, uh, could be a treacherous thing since they are considered state laws right now. Um, and the big thing for myself and Superintendent Newdahl is that, you know, our job is risk management for the city. And if our insurance company does not cover claims like this, and they were very specific, um, I printed out the, the section from City County Insurance about it, that, um, if we have any claims related to pathogens, and they were specific, you know, that's not just COVID, that, you know, hepatitis, that, that's any kind of pathogen. We, we don't have coverage for that. And then secondarily, because the question had been posed to them, is that, okay, if, if people are choosing not to follow the executive orders, which are laws at this time, um, there is no coverage if there's a claim due to, um, violation of any, that were, uh, any of the executive orders. So, um, that's our job. It's, it's the, the steward of the city's money and steward of the public's money. Um, but that's the short answer, is we can't meet the guidelines.
Okay, then I am going to unmute, ask to unmute Kelly. I think she's already done it. Good job.
Yeah. I think we all are used to, I mean, many of us are zooming 14 times a day right now. So this is a very easy platform. Um, again, this is Kelly Timcheck, and I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for, um, you know, allowing us to be here and have this discussion. I do actually, um, you know, I'm not super prepared, being that this happened like four days ago, um, to come. I would assume that maybe going forward, we could maybe meet up again or have a little work session where we can have some more informed decision um, making or discussing about decisions. But I just had a couple of questions, um, that I wanted to ask you guys. And one of those is just a, can we have a continued conversation about this? Because I, I don't know that it's, you know, is tonight the end of the, like, the answer is no, and that's just what it is. My first question is actually that the rules of OSHA don't actually apply. That's an employee-employer relationship. And so I'm curious of why we are quoting OSHA rules on the playground. So that's, that's my first question.
Um, the, the guidelines, they apply to our staff, um, view of law. And so the cleaning requirement that the OHA requires, which are, the playground has to be cleaned twice daily, once, it has to be, this is fact, like, once, twice a day, once a day in the peak hours and once at the end of the day. So, but the OSHA rules overlapped with the OHA rules in several different places. They reference different documents. And the reason why the OSHA rules apply is if you look into the other ones, OSHA applies, the gathering rules apply, outdoor recreation applies, and there's the gathering already, um, and face covering. And so it's not just one document. There's, um, there's actually a whole bunch of them. And so that's why the OSHA is. And the OSHA says that we are required for outdoor recreation to ensure that the people that are visiting are following the state guidelines.
Right. Yeah, and I was reading that because it was saying outdoor recreation. And they actually do say in there that you need to ensure the six-foot distance at playgrounds, whatever splash pods are, and restrooms. Um, and then again, it said if applicable, move the equipment, which we can't do. Um, and then in there, it actually does say if it can't be achieved, you can close the facility. But it does also say that if you're not able to achieve a six-foot distance, that masks can be worn. So I, I'm just cautioning, um, I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking too is, you know, I, I would still prefer, if you guys had like two seconds to like email or call, even at a minimum, Port Orford and Brookings. I know you said it doesn't apply. It's not your city, but they're obviously doing it. Portland has been open. All their parks have been open. They are still in high risk. I know the city of Portland is not just shirking their duties or ignoring OSHA or ignoring OHA. They have to be doing something that is a workaround for them. So I'm not asking that you necessarily need to like, you know, go and fix it and model our city after theirs. But obviously, there are other people that are doing it. And I would like to find out if they're doing it in a safe manner or if they're, you know, what their workaround is. So I'm just curious if you could get, you know, some more information aside from just like you looking into the one specific document. I really appreciate it, Jody, and, and will too. I appreciate you guys looking into it. But it just seems that there are a lot of other playgrounds that are open. And so I'm, I'm just, I guess I'm a little flummoxed on why we can't ask someone else what they're doing.
Well, no, the one thing that I can't ask is that I'm not in charge of them, so what they're doing. But what I said in the staff report is that it's one of two things. Either they do have the resources to be able to comply with the law, so that's how they're open, or they're choosing to ignore it, or they're not aware. I shouldn't say ignore. It could be that, that they're not aware. Because I have had other cities contact me when the OSHA stuff came out and they weren't even aware of it. So if they weren't aware that the OSHA stuff came out, they may not even be aware that there are provisions that apply to the playground. So, so Portland, I'm sure, has the staff to do the cleaning and the monitoring, because they have a public, they have a parks department.
Sure, so they may be doing that. Yeah. I was just thinking, yeah, so they might be doing the cleaning.
Right, right. And, and the thing that, um, the city of Gold Beach does not have a, a parks department. We have a park, um, and then South Beach Park where the visitor center is, but we don't have a parks department. And the, the public works department, we have six individuals that work in the public works department. But right now, because of COVID, um, I, we have them working split shifts because we're trying to keep the shifts apart from each other. We're trying to, we're working three guys, crews. Because if somebody gets sick, the city of Gold Beach isn't going to be able, we're not going to have a water and sewer plant. And so when it comes to the, the hierarchy of importance to the city, um, maintaining water and sewer service is our highest priority, obviously, for health and safety. Um, but I'm also, from the OSHA standpoint, I also don't want to put the three, the six individuals that are, in my opinion, the most important individuals in our town right now and have been for the last year, I'm not going to put them at risk to clean the playground twice a day. I'm sorry that that's, I'm sorry that that's the way it is. We need those individuals to be able to operate the, the water and wastewater plant. And that's not something that, um, is, they, that it's a certification process. It's not like we could call up somebody else and say, hey, can you cover for the day? Brookings actually doesn't even operate their sewer plant anymore because they couldn't keep qualified staff. They, they now have a private company that operates. So, um, so it's not that, you know, we haven't looked at options or what can we do, um, but we just, we don't have the staff to, to comply with the law.
Hey, Jody, just real quickly, did you guys, uh, I'm, I'm assuming that you did, but you probably had to create your OSHA infection control plan for all your insight and field stuff, along with the regulations in December. Okay. And is it okay? Like, can you guys share a copy of that, just out of curiosity?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, cool. And then again, the difference, are you just, are you telling me the difference, uh, as you understand it too, is this because the playgrounds have uh, different rules and guidelines? I mean, I see even on the Portland site, they have, you know, tennis courts, basketball courts. You know, all the other things are separated.
Yes.
But those require cleanings and not the other?
Correct. That's why, like pickleball and tennis courts, disc golf, those things don't require those twice daily cleanings and the monitoring. The, the restrooms, the pavilions, the Kid Castle structure, which playground is what they call it, and then the splash pad too, which that, that actually is kind of a cool thing. I wish we could get one, but, um, but those three items do require the twice daily cleaning and the monitoring. So, and, and when I say the monitoring, we have to post a monitor to ensure that people are physically distancing and wearing their masks. So it's not just a matter of, um, you know, going down there twice a day to clean if we have the staff and the ability to clean. There has to be somebody posted there to physically distance, to ensure physically distance and masking. I, I'm, I haven't been to Brookings or Port Orford, but I find it hard to believe that they have somebody there posted monitoring, but maybe they do.
They do not. They do not. Yeah. I've been to there several times. They, they do not. But I'm, what I'm wondering is, yeah, but I mean, do you technically or legally, I don't want to shut down the rest of the park, but do you, are you supposed to have monitors like at the tennis courts or at the, like, how do you ensure the six-foot space in those other places, out of curiosity?
Those, those aren't, they don't have the same requirement because they're considered like in the trail section. You don't have to have a physical monitor for the trails or other outdoor areas. The playground, because there's the ability to have poster concentrations of people, that requires the monitoring. Like, if you're playing tennis, the most you're going to have, like, if you were playing doubles, you would have, what, eight people in there? Um, at, at any given time. But in a playground structure, there is the ability to have a much larger capacity, which, and I'm only speculating here. I mean, I, I can't, you know, reach the, of why OHA says this is okay and that's not.
Yeah.
But, but that's my speculation, is that in playgrounds, there tends to be a higher concentration of people than on trails or in the tennis court. If we had, where we actually had, um, like sign-out equipment, we, we wouldn't probably be able to do that. But because we don't provide equipment to people, like tennis rackets and bats and baseballs and things like that, or the disc golf stuff, um, otherwise, we would also have, there's another regimen that we would have to, to do in order to ensure the safety of those problems. But thankfully, we don't have that.
Um, Councilor Pagano had a question. He said, does the cleaning and sanitizing have to be done by staff?
It says that, it says must be cleaned. Outdoor recreation operators must clean outdoor playgrounds once during peak use times and again at the end of the day. Now, as I said in the report, the question has been posed to me about volunteers, but and I, and, and I think you guys know that this isn't the first time I'm raining on everybody's parade. I say this about five times a year, that I'm raining on people's parade. But volunteers, if we have, because people have said, well, we'll, we'll have somebody else do it, that doesn't alleviate the risk to the city. If, if something happens, we still don't have coverage. And so if we did have people that say, okay, we're going to volunteer, we still have to supervise that. And that's where we're saying we don't have the staff. So, yeah, I mean, somebody, it doesn't have to be a city paid person, but if they're down there working to do something like city equipment, then they're a city volunteer.
Are you able to, this is just odd, but I'm assuming there, you know, there's inherent risk with parks. And I'm assuming that no one's ever sued you because they broke their arm when they fell off the swing, which is a risk that it happens all the time, or people get hurt all the time. So I'm just wondering, um, with this one too, is it a possibility, Jody, at some point, um, I don't know, even if it were to lessen the cleanings or something, can you post on the outside your liability in the CDC guidelines, just the way you have, you know, at some of the other sites there too, that says, this is a requirement of the city, you know, blah, 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 um, so that it almost releases your liability of some of those items? Is that a possibility, or have you looked into that?
At this point, no, because the, because we're under the declared state of an urgency. Um, if it were just in normal time, then maybe, but no, we act, we actually do get sued quite often. They, they don't succeed, but we, we probably have about, I'd say between three and five, um, liability claims a year that get filed. Um, thankfully, the insurance company takes care of them, but, um, yeah, we get, we claim a lot.
So I want to kind of get wrapping this up. So it sounds like from a staff point of view, the risk um, is too great at this point in violating the state guidelines to open Kid Castle, um, the play structure. And we've got at least one community member that would like us to reconsider that. And, and it sounds like you've done that. Is there anybody else in the community that wanted to speak to this matter? I think you all know how to unmute now.
And just, Kelly, I wrote down your questions and I will get answers for them, okay?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Jody. And again, on my parting, I will just say that I, I just want to keep it an open conversation and kind of keep looking into solutions. I do not, uh, want to necessarily close the door because I know it's easy to close doors because we're all overwhelmed and we're all under a lot of capacity issues right now. Uh, but this is a really important piece of our community. And Sergio and Kylie were just talking about this. I mean, the disc golf course is amazing. And, you know, the Kitty Castle is just one tiny bit of the park that, you know, that we all like to tackle. So I don't want to get into the huge bits. But, I mean, it's, it's the gem of the community for families. So I'm just going to park my statement there.
Don't see anybody else on meeting. Does anybody on the council want to speak? Oh, wait, Sergio's got his hand up.
Uh, I just heard that you acknowledged that at least one community member is, uh, asking for the city council to at least, uh, see if there's something more they can do to, to open up the parks. I just want to throw my hand in the ring and say, I also am a community member with two young children. I would love to see the parks open up. I understand there are restrictions. But I would urge the council to, uh, seek out remedies. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I want to clarify for everyone that the park is open. There are only the bathrooms, the pavilions, and the playground structure. The rest of the park is open. The park is not closed. You can, you can go to the, the basketball court. You can go to the tennis court. You can do the trails. You can do disc golf. It, it's the three things that we can't clean. But the park is open. So I just, I mean, I don't know if people are using that word interchangeably, but for our purposes, it's not interchangeable. The playground is, is an element of the park. So, but the park is open. I just want to make that clear.
Let's see, and we also have Kaylee Clarno that she would like to see the park open up. And...
The park, the park is open. The park, the park is open.
And Kaylee asked if it was possible to get a porta potty, which comes with cleaning. I think we do have porta potties, don't we?
There are porta potties, and that is why we have them, because we can't clean. So I know it sounds weird, but according to the state, if we have porta potties, then we don't have to, we aren't required to clean our restroom structures.
And doesn't the vendor do that occasionally?
They're supposed to.
Okay. Okay, is there anybody on the council that would like to speak about this?
I would, but I'm happy to be patient and let others speak first.
Go for it, Council Madison, you have this floor.
Okay, so, as you know, I was probably really excited to see this come up on the agenda because I too believe that this is a resource that I would like to see open and pretty much willing to support anything that makes that happen. So a couple of things, I just made some notes, and I'll just brief through them really quick. What are our options for insurance that would keep us from being liable? And is that, is that an option that we could look at? And it may be reimbursable through CARES Act funding. And then, have we brought this to our, our legal advisor? Maybe this is something they could help us figure out how other cities are doing this when we're feeling reserved enough to not do this. I actually had lunch with Jay Trost last Thursday, and so, for those of you that don't know Jay, he was the director for the juvenile department when he first came to Curry County. He then took a job with the city of Brookings, and his job is to take care of the parks. He also owns Fat Irish, but he serves on the school board. And, and so he's got a really good scope of responsibility and what our kids need right now. And so I had asked him, what did you guys do, you know, to get your parks open? And he said, we closed the bathrooms, and we used signs that said, use at your own risk, and then posted the signage that had the recommendations and not mandates. And they also provided sanitizer dispensers at their play structure, which coincidentally, I just got 21 pellets of PPE, and I have 50 sanitizing dispensers and refills available if that is something that we wanted to consider using. Lastly, spray sanitizer equipment, they have those backpack units. They're, they're loaded with the sanitizer spray. It might take 10 minutes tops to spray down the equipment, once in the morning and once in the evening. And I also know that that cost, especially for temporary staff, to see that through outside of what we currently have at Public Works, is reimbursable through CARES Act too. So I, I guess what I'm saying is that if we really, really want to try and provide the service that the community is asking us to, to provide, let's do some due diligence and, and see what we can do. I mean, it may end up that we're really not able to do that, but I think we need to look at all the answers on the, on the table and, and consider if it's a doable thing.
Do you want to respond to that, Council, City Administrator?
When you talk to Mr. Trost, so are they, they're doing the twice daily cleaning that's required on the play structure?
Nope, they do not have the staff. It's use at your own risk, and they provide the sanitizer at the entrances.
But that's, that's not what the, the rule says. That's why I'm saying that I don't, I don't think that everybody's reading the rules correctly. It doesn't say, it, for the restroom, it says that you can post that you can't keep it clean. But the, the cleaning of the play structure itself, it does not, it does not have that option.
Right, so, well, that's, that's what they're doing, and, and, you know, they have a lot of traffic at that park, so I'm not sure what that looks like for them as far as repercussions. But then again, the example that we have at the, at the county is that we do have that spray sanitizing equipment reimbursable for expenses, including the temporary staff to see that through. So if we're looking at enduring this closure and this, you know, emergency for the next year, I would hope that we could at least explore options that we might be able to put into place until that emergency is lifted. We, we have no idea how long that's going to be here, especially with the new forms of COVID, that have, restraints of COVID that have popped up.
Yeah, that's a concern.
Okay, so I think Counselor Bradley was next? No? You had unmuted, I muted you because you were making noise. Okay. Did any other counselor want to make a comment? Okay.
Okay, so this, this is the order, I've written down the, the concerns and the, the questions. I will, I will look into all of these this week and get the answers back to the mayor, and we'll see where we can go from there.
I, I do have a question, Mayor, I just...
Counselor Campbell?
Administrator Fritz, does the rule, does the rule say you shall or you may? Because there's a huge difference between you may clean versus you shall clean. You know what I mean?
It's not the cleaning that's the problem, it sounds like, it's the monitoring. We have a hard time getting people to wear a mask in a grocery store, at Venta County Commission meetings with people without masks. So if we can't even do it in our own public health department, how are we gonna do that on a playground? It's gonna be tough.
And the, the monitoring. But to Counselor Campbell's question, it says must. Must clean outdoor playgrounds once during PQ times and again at the end of the day. So it's, it's, Jody, the risk manager, that's pretty clear.
Yeah.
And, and then, as far as the, the physical monitoring and physical business monitoring and the mask monitoring, it, that, that again is the, the, not the permit, it is shall.
I, I wouldn't mind, I mean, I understand the appeal for wanting the kiddie castle open, I really do. I do think it's, it's a valuable part, part of our community, and I agree with that aspect of it, but the cop in me wants to follow the rules. I mean, the state rules are the state rules. But I do like the idea of seeing if there's a workaround that's legal, that we can still dot our i's and cross our t's, but get that open for our community who seems to really want it open.
And I, I will try to address the, the questions that everyone has asked and see if there's a legal way that we can comply.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I'll make a comment on this. I, I hear the, what the community is saying, and I hear what Counselor Madison and Counselor Campbell just said, as well as staff's concerns, and I would like to agree with Counselor Madison and perhaps Administrator and Public Works Nudal, who we did not give a chance to speak, the silent type, to, to give your interpretation of the rules or laws to our legal counsel and see if they agree. Maybe they can give us a little bit of either, yep, this is the way it is, and you got it right, or wait, here, here's how we look at this, because sometimes they read things differently than we do.
Yeah.
I'm not perfectly comfortable as a, as a public official breaking a law, and we do with marijuana, and we're going to be doing it with mushrooms soon. But I, I'm not super excited about breaking state law without good reason, and so that gives me some uncomfort if we had that direction. And I don't think any of the citizens are asking us to do that, I think they're asking us to find a workaround to make it work. So I'm, I'm okay with that. So with that, I think we're gonna move on to the next subject, which is ordinance and resolutions. We get to go with that big, long annexation discussion. Thank you, everybody, for your input. I realize a bunch of you are probably gonna hop off now, but we're really pretty exciting. So...
I will give back to everyone on what, what the possibilities could be.
And there, there's one thing on the ordinance 673 that I wanted to mention before we get too started in it, and this one is that, one of the objections that the county had was that it was not in the urban growth boundary, because the line is in the flood plain. And if you read the map, it clearly does not say flood plain, it says floodway, as pointed out to me by the city planner slash administrator. So the line is correct, it is in the urban growth boundary, they misread the map. I don't know if any of you caught that, but it is something that was caught. So we do know that Administrator Fritz is correct, it is in the flood plain, but not in the floodway. So it is in the urban growth boundary. Did I say that correctly? Okay, so with that, is there any discussion before we formulate a motion?
Let me get there.
I wasn't asking you. I was asking our, our council.
And like I said, I know I, I dumped a, a ton of stuff on you, and so if you need clarification or anything before you guys feel comfortable making the decision, either way...
Okay. Oh, Counselor Madison, did you want to abstain from this? You had reason to last time, and...
I did have reason to, and thank you, Mayor. You know, actually, after reading the briefing that was provided by the city administrator and finding concern and, and quite honestly disappoint with the lack of follow through from county council, after bringing this issue to the forefront and potentially delaying the, the process, I, with that, I am, I'm, I'm in support of moving forward. The, the standing concern that I do have is the law enforcement piece, and, and I shared that at the last meeting with the, you know, in, in one of the deliverables that we have in some of our goals is 24/7, 24/7 police coverage, which we don't have. You know, not, not without being on call anyways. But the time that it takes to get upriver and the time that it gets back, I, I am concerned that that's going to take away from some of the residents and calls that we may get as far as, you know, Hunter Creek. And, and so I'm hoping that the, the property owner, if it comes to a point where they see they may need some security on site, that they truly consider that, so that it doesn't become an unfair burden on the staff of the, the city police department. And that's all I have, thank you.
Administrator Fritz, may I call on Sergeant Miller to address that concern?
Absolutely.
Sergeant Miller, would you be willing to unmute and address that? The way I addressed it at the county commission meeting was that we are handling county calls anyway, so... You have the floor, Sergeant Miller. I think he's in the car. He has no audio, okay. All right, so I will take the liberty of answering it, because I did check into it before, and most of the calls that first come into the county, county area near Gold Beach, the city does respond frequently. There was a knifing and a shooting in the last couple of years that we were first on scene and took care of. So we're doing it anyway, because the county doesn't have the resources to do everything they need to do, and they spend a lot of their time in North and South County. So I, I think for my satisfaction, I got enough answer to that, but I don't know if the council has enough satisfaction just based on that. Administrator Fritz, did you have anything to add?
Just that we, we, I'm trying to be delicate. We frequently respond well outside of the area that the mill site is, frequently.
Oh, Sergeant Miller typed in an answer. He said, you have two officers on duty at this time, you also have two deputies on duty at this time. One is in South County. On average, we have better coverage than the county average. So we have two people for our city limits, and they have two people for the entire, I think it's 100 mile long and then 35 miles in from where people live. So that's why they count on the city of Brookings, the city of Port Sanford, and the city of Gold Beach to assist.
Correct. And we responded as far south as the Sisso River, and we frequently go as far north as, as Mississippi Beach, frequently. So, you know, when that was mentioned at the Board of Commissioners meeting when you were there, Mayor, that there was a collective sound over here at City Hall.
So, okay, is, is there any other council that wanted to discuss this before we ask for a motion? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion, or?
Okay, can I, can I just clarify, I'm sorry?
Yes.
And this is always a confusing thing, because we don't do ordinances real often. We do resolutions just about every meeting, but ordinances sometimes we only do one or two a year. But typically, ordinances take two readings, two meetings to approve. You do approve it in one meeting, we do the reading of the title, generally the title by only, reading by title only, and then the following month, the process is, is repeated, because the ordinance has to have two readings before it can be adopted. There is a process that it can be adopted in one meeting, but there has to be a unanimous vote of all five commissioners, counselors, that they agree to adopt it in one meeting. So if, I always throw this out there, if you want to adopt it in one meeting, then you need to make a motion that I would like to adopt it in one meeting. We have the vote, if it's not unanimous, it's automatically a two-meeting thing. If it is unanimous, then we can have both things in one night. So, so it's up to you whether you want to try to do it in, in one, or if we just want to say, forget it, let's just have the first reading tonight. So I'm throwing that out there for you.
It looks like Counselor Pagano is ready.
Okay. I'm ready to make a motion on it.
Go for it.
I make a motion to the, I make a motion that the council adopt ordinance number 673 with both readings this, this evening.
I second.
And that was Counselor Madison?
Yes.
Okay, so again, this is not to adopt the ordinance, this is just to answer the question if you want to try to do it in one night.
Right.
Okay, would you reback the motion, Administrator?
Counselor Pagano made the motion to, made the motion that the council adopt ordinance number 673 with both readings this evening.
Okay, I will call the question. Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Counselor McGilvery?
Aye.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Bradley?
Aye.
Counselor Pagano?
Aye.
It is unanimous. May I have a, are you ready? Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
For the first reading.
And do we, can we do this by title only, or do we have to read it?
No, both of them can be by title only, but you'll do, you'll make the motion by title only, I'll read it into the record. We make another motion, the second reading by title only, and then I read it into the record. I know it sounds verbally redundant, welcome to government, well.
Right. Counselor Pagano, would you like to start?
I make the motion that the council adopt ordinance number 673 and approve first and second readings by title only.
I'll second.
That was Counselor Madison?
Yes.
For the second, and, okay, so... Okay, so then, yeah, go ahead, Mayor, sorry.
Okay, does the motion work?
Yes, that, that works.
Okay, would you read back the motion?
Counselor Pagano made the motion that the council adopt ordinance 673 and approve the first and second reading by title only.
Okay, I will call for the question. Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Counselor McGilvery.
Aye.
Counselor Madison.
Aye.
Counselor Bradley.
Aye.
Counselor Pagano.
Aye.
Okay, so now what I'm going to do now is
Read the title?
Into the record for the first reading and then read it again into the second reading. So ordinance number 673 in ordinance annexed in territory identified as Prairie County at Suster Mount 361416, tax lot 302, 200, 307, and 312 into the city limits of Gold Beach, first reading.
Okay, I wouldn't.
Oh, sorry.
Were you just gonna read it twice?
I have to say second reading the second time, yeah.
Okay, I'm just wondering, should we do a second motion just to make sure it's clear?
Well, that was.
Okay. I'm just double checking in case we get a challenge, but we didn't have anybody show up, so I don't think we'll get a challenge.
Yeah, because the motion did say approve the first and second reading.
Okay, then read it. Thank you.
Okay, so we, that was the first reading. So ordinance number 673 in ordinance annexed in territory identified as Prairie County at Suster Mount 361416, tax lot 302, 200, 307, and 312 into the city limits of Gold Beach, second reading. Alrighty.
That was a lot of work for a very quick council action.
That's like 98 and a half hours of your life, but I'll never do that.
But you know, when you're prepared, things go easy. Okay, next up is Resolution R 21, 2021, excuse me, R 2021-13, appointments to commissions and committees. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the council adopt Resolution R 2021-13, a resolution confirming appointments to city commissions and committees and setting terms of office.
I'll second.
Counselor Bradley seconded. So we got Pagano with the, Counselor Pagano with the motion, Counselor Bradley with the second. That was really clear. I don't think we need it right back. Any discussion? Then I will call for the question. Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Counselor McGilvery.
Aye.
Counselor Madison.
Aye.
Counselor Bradley.
Aye.
Counselor Pagano.
Aye.
We have got this down. All right, next up is December financials, actual deposit and the audit. I'm gonna say that we move this to next month because we just got them. Unless there's an objection.
I like that idea.
I don't think anybody could have an intelligent conversation about it tonight.
No, you have item, the 10 miscellaneous items.
Oops. Dang, gotta watch me. Okay, discuss council priorities and topics that issued sidelined by the COVID crisis. And it looks like everybody was pretty clear that update on vacation rental, short-term rental was top.
May I speak, Ms. Mayor?
Counselor Campbell.
I messed that up and I wanted to apologize. I read it in my brain as labeled them most important to least important. So I did A, B, C, D, like on down the alphabet. And everybody else actually read the instructions and did it correctly. And it's really evident on this cool chart that Jody made. So I wanted to apologize for screwing that up.
Well, it actually worked because Counselor Madison did it as well. I think it worked with the numbers.
All right, Summer, I wasn't alone. Thank you.
I did do that. In fact, I think we were right.
You know, I would admit that to say, those were my priorities because that was the order.
I totally did it that way also, and then I changed and did it the other way.
Okay, so in the future, we're gonna go in order of priority.
Well, and after I, I thought, why didn't I sign it numbered? Because then I had to figure out, I had to like, okay, is A gonna be? Yeah, and then I had to figure out mathematical, mathematical things. It's like, okay, next time we're just gonna use numbers.
We like to keep it interesting. So, um, it, if, if I'm reading this correctly and if the council is in agreement, the top two priorities will probably get done quickly, as quick as possible, and then we'll start working from there. Um, I did want to address the gas tax, and I can't remember who wrote this. Prefer to wait for a while because of the rough times.
That was Counselor Pagano.
Pagano, yeah, and I, I really thought that was well thought out. Did you guys want to discuss that now or later?
I agree with them, but that's just my opinion.
And I would.
I would, I would be curious to what Will has to say about postponing, kind of what that timeframe might look for us as far as road repairs go.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Councilors. As far as putting it off until we can get out of the COVID crisis, since it is a tax or a fee that we would be placing upon the residents or possibly even a larger net. We need to have some strategy as far as when that would be the best time for our society to take on another financial burden. As it goes, asphalt prices are increasing, you know, a moderate amount, but not gigantic. And so we can carry the load. We're currently patching everything that needs help in this immediate time. So if we want to strategize a better time to do this, I, I think financially, you know, we could probably carry it. We don't have anything in dire need that's gonna fall apart right now.
That's, that's great to know. And, and so I wonder too, if because of COVID, maybe we have the opportunity as well to be strategic in what we're actually asking of that gas tax and maybe I mean, after this past summer and the onslaught of tourism and visitors that we saw, maybe we look at it not imposing that on the residents and just the visitors.
Yes.
How would you do that, Counselor Madison?
By zip code.
So when you go to fill up at the pump, you have to give your zip code?
Right.
So you have to show your ID?
No, you just, they ask what your zip code is and you give it to them. I've had it happen in several other locations across the state.
Really? That's interesting. I thought that was just to validate your credit card.
No, but you know, at this point, I'm, I'm, I'm hip to their tricks now, and so I learned what the local zip code is. Okay, not really, but I wish.
I know a lot of them.
If you got it on your license plate, so they know.
Oh, you're right, Jody, darn it.
Sorry, I mean, City Administrator Fritz.
So it, it, would the rest of the council agree that the gas tax should probably be lower than where we actually rated it? Based on timing? It's important, but.
Yes, I rated it way down.
Okay, and Counselor Bradley?
Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head where I rated it, but it's not a top priority issue in my head.
Okay, and Counselor Pagano, I think you were the one that brought it up in the first place, and Counselor Campbell already agreed. So maybe we put that off till next year?
I think so.
Okay, so how about we bring it up next January? Ish, December?
January would be good because then that gives us the shot to either look at May or November.
I'm gonna suggest December because January is always busy.
Okay, revisit in December of this year.
Yeah, well, just then we can decide if we want to work on it or not. By then, make, could be over. History. Okay. And was there any other priorities that we should add in here before the top two are done?
Well, Counselor Bradley had actually put a put a good one in there. He said, I'd like to start the process to find resources to help and aid property owners upgrade to concrete sidewalks on 101 frontage. We actually do have the ability to do that already through, through, basically it's a, in an LID class where but we all, but we have to upfront the money. So Will and I could talk a little bit about that. See, there's, because of all the stuff on COVID, there may be state money that wouldn't normally be there that might be available. So we, we can look into that.
I'm all for grabbing state money when we can.
Absolutely.
I have a comment.
Go for it.
I know we've, we've kind of tossed it around a few times. What about the road diet?
That, um, Counselor Brennan was, I believe you and Counselor Brennan were the ones that were gonna be working on it and then then that's when every, that's when the virus apocalypse hit.
Yeah.
Has ODOT talked with you at all, Counselor Madison?
You know, just back when we had our meetings, I want to say April, April, May. And I really haven't followed up with Nivo on that, but I would be happy to if you guys want me to bring back kind of a timeframe. I know we were in a position where they were going to redo our, our 101, and so we had to kind of fall in line in conjunction with that, but they could have had some delays in scheduling because of COVID. So if you want me to reach out and see where we're at on that, I am happy to.
And you might check, they may have a new recommendation because after the wildfires over in Southern Oregon, they have taken most of the road diets out. Phoenix is all, all but like one is gone. They're gonna have it all gone by the end of the month, I understand.
Really?
Yeah, because people couldn't evacuate fast enough. It almost caused deaths.
That is a great point. Thank you for bringing that up.
The police didn't know what to do with people because they were sending them north. And then it was so log jammed that they decided it was actually safer to send people south. But there was just like literally short windows and because that wildfire moved so quickly.
Right.
So ODOT might be rethinking, because that was a state highway as well, how those go. Now, they had the bump outs, so maybe if you didn't have the bump outs, it wouldn't be such a big deal. You could still evacuate quickly, but
Sure.
And we don't have as many people as they do.
Well, that's, that's definitely, you know, an unfortunate circumstance that will help our case if we're looking to move forward on that, how we do that.
Just something to consider. Okay. Then Administrator, do you need any more input on that or do you kind of know what to work on next?
Yep, I will take it from there. Like I said in the report, the item one and two, we already are pretty, pretty good down the road. So we should be able to tackle those in a pretty short order.
Okay. And then the goals and objectives that we started in 2010 and have modified over the years. Were you guys able to have a chance to kind of look at that over the last two meetings? And did you want to discuss that any further tonight?
And those were the, those were the rules before any changes were made. Those were the original ones.
Oh, okay.
If you had asked me to, that the updates were confusing, so.
Well, it, what, yeah, it was getting really hard to read. And I thought maybe some of the stuff could be reformatted. Do we need to bring back our latest goals then?
I would say, yeah.
Okay, so let's.
See what the goals were originally.
Yeah, so do you guys want to look at those next month? What our last update was. Go ahead, Counselor Madison.
Do you all feel like maybe this would warrant a workshop? I would love to just kind of unpack some of this and expand on what our options might be, especially because it's dated back to 2010 and we've learned so much since then that maybe our perception might be a little different. But I've got to say, the amount of work that was put into this is huge and there's great stuff here that, that for the most part applies. But if we were able to sit down and workshop this together and bounce ideas off of each other, it might not just my thought.
Everybody else in favor of that?
I like that idea.
Sounds like a good plan.
I'll, I'll put the, put them back the way.
Yeah, start with the update.
I'll, I'll try to format them so they're more clear.
Or just throw it out there and then we'll just redo them. How's that?
Yeah, because some of these things, like I said, these were the original, they're tangled and a lot of this stuff.
Yeah, so let's just throw out the last revision and then we'll clean it up at our workshop. Um, when we did the original, we did a town hall meeting. But I, I like the idea of doing a workshop. Let's get a draft. And then let's do that in a town hall. So then we have a draft and then see what the community wants to add to. Does that sound good to everybody?
Yes.
We'll start with the workshop. Okay.
Great idea. I think the citizens would be happy to participate at this time.
And how soon would you like to do that?
I'm open.
Campbell?
Don't we have a second meeting date that we get?
We do.
What is that, the third Monday of the month, I believe?
Fourth.
It's the fourth Monday.
Okay.
Whatever, buddy, you want to do that in February? Or do you want to push it off to March or?
I'm, I'm okay with February, but what does it, everybody else think?
Counselor Madison?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty open, so.
We're looking at February 22nd.
Um, actually, that's not gonna work.
Not gonna work?
I have a procedure that day.
Okay, how about, are you having a planning commission meeting on President's Day, the 15th? That might be too soon.
Yeah.
That, that'll be, yeah, that'll be, no offense, but that'll be too soon for me.
Okay, how about March 22nd? Are we getting too close to budget stress?
Oh, that's fine. So March 27th, and now we need to change. March 22nd.
And Monday, two, three, fourth Monday. The, okay, Counselor Madison, can you make that?
Yeah, what time are we thinking on the 22nd of March?
8:00 AM.
What?
Kidding. I shouldn't do that in a public meeting, sorry. We usually meet at 6:30.
In the evening.
Yeah, do you want to continue with that or?
Sounds good to me. Yep.
Counselor Campbell's going, I'm not getting up at 6:30 in the morning.
Not unless we're going fishing, ma'am. Not unless we're going fishing.
Counselor Bradley, can you do the 22nd around 6:30?
Yes, I can.
And Counselor Pagano?
Yep.
Counselor Campbell?
Yes, Mayor.
Counselor McGilvery?
Yes.
All right, we have a workshop set.
Okay, so I will clean up the current version of the goals and then give those to you in the next couple of weeks. So that way you have some time to kind of look at and digest them and think about other things that you might want to do. And then, then when we have the workshop, we can actually like dig in and start working.
All right, good stuff. Love this, Council.
Okay, we're gonna do that on the 22nd. Say right now, I'm gonna commit to have it to you guys by March 15th.
Uh. Okay. So are we done with that topic? Nobody's jumping up and down. We're good. Okay, so next is council rule changes. So I went over the council rules and I, I made some suggestions based on what I've gotten from other cities and we don't follow them exactly. And we don't follow them exactly, and I think sometimes that's good. So I was thinking we might want to change them to meet that. So rather than go over them line by line, I thought I would just start with each of you and see if you had any suggestions, agreement, disagreement. So I'm going to put Counselor Campbell on the spot first because she's first to vote.
Thank you, Mayor.
So everybody knows who's next.
Thank you. I did not read the rules before the meeting, but I did read them last month and I remember them being fine. But I was looking more towards what new rules were going to be in place regarding internet, the Zoom stuff. The Zoom rules, for lack of the proper term.
Okay. So the suggestions that I had had was to put in a sign rule that they can only bring in an eight and a half by 11 piece of paper. They can't bring sticks with big posters signs on them. That came from a League of Oregon Cities meeting I went to training. The second was when you have public comment, right now we say five minutes per person. If 20 people come, that's going to take up our whole meeting. So I was wondering if we wanted to set that at a time limit, for example, 15 minutes divided by the number of people that want to speak. And then that would be the time available. We don't normally have that problem, but it was a suggestion. The next was, we usually, the council rules say we have to have a motion before we can discuss it. And sometimes you really don't know what the motion's going to be until you do discuss it. So I think we should be allowed to do a roundtable discussion before the motion's made to try to make sure we, we're on the same page. And that was one suggestion. And then one was pretty minor, just to add to the agenda, revisions to the agenda. And then I was talking to Administrator Fritz today, and this is not written in your packet, that we have, it's really confusing to do your public hearing and then stop talking about it and come back later and talk about the ordinance that's tied to it. So we were wondering if we should do public hearing followed by ordinances. That way they, they go together instead of that choppy. And the people that come for the public hearing want to know what we're going to decide. So that was added. And then suggestion on to add in for the legislative hearing. Then I had a bunch of other suggestions that, that staff came in. So that was kind of the basics. And I, I wanted permission from the council to work with the city attorney to make sure we do it legally as well. So after that, Counselor Campbell, did I hit anything that you don't like or that you do like?
I liked having the ordinance right after the public meeting. Because I do agree, it seemed odd that we had this whole public meeting and discuss it, but then the actual ordinance isn't until later. So that's odd. I, I like that change. That's it.
Okay. Counselor McGilvery, did you want to give any input?
I read the ordinance changes today, or read the changes today. And I have not enough experience with the council to really speak intelligently. I do like having the ordinance taken care of right after the public meeting and allowing people to hear it. Otherwise you have the feeling that they all said their piece and went away and then the council did as it pleased. And, and they, they would at least have the more of a feeling of having been heard. And I liked that idea. I, I think everything, I think the changes that you have instigated or that you're willing to instigate, I think make common sense. And so I had no problem with what I heard.
See, Counselor Madison?
Okay, so council rule number nine. Interesting. So I don't, I don't really have an issue with the signs. I learned that at the LOC training as well. But what I find interesting is that it says not device shall be attached to the sign like a post stick or other item that could be used as a weapon. And so much these days, words are used as weapons. And so would there be a limit, a more specific, specifics on, you know, language and offensive? I know we could go down a rabbit hole on that, but that just came to mind. Rule number 10. Yeah, I'll, I'll go with what everybody else thinks on that one. Rule 17. I completely agree with what's proposed. Rule 22, I agree with as well. Yeah, pass that. Chapter nine. So chapter nine, interactions with staff and city attorney. Is it appropriate for me to ask what City Administrator Fritz's perception is on that?
Well, Camp, uh, they were talking, we were talking earlier and she had said something about the agenda. And I said, well, I, I actually don't like how the agenda is put together. And she's like, and you put up with it all in years? Why didn't you say something? And it's like, well, I'm the implementer. I don't, I don't really get involved in how, how the rules of conduct, I, I just have to follow them. So I, I did read through this and, and I think it's good. I have enjoyed for a lot of years, a really excellent relationship with both of the former mayors and now Mayor Kaufman and all of the city councilors, knock on wood, because I know it's not that way in a lot of cities. But I think these rules are meant to kind of, if there are issues, there's pretty clear things. Because right now, if there were issues, we really don't have anything to speak to it. So I like the fact that LOC was the one that came up with it because obviously there's the, the knowers of when things happen. In fact, there was a LOC class that I went to that was two former city managers and they talked about manager and council relations. And so, so I think a lot of these are good, especially if you are not in a situation like me where everybody's got a long career as well. So, but I don't think it's a bad thing. Because council change, all change, so.
Okay, thank you for that. So I'm looking at chapter nine, 1C, and it's limiting individual inquiries and requests for information from staff. I, I just want to make sure I don't take that for granted in my day job because I know that you and I communicate about a bunch of things during the day and I don't want that to hinder. I don't want you to feel like I'm ever taking advantage of that in my day job.
Gosh, no, no. And, you know, because we do live in, you know, our ancestor is small town, we all wear different hats. And, you know, so I know when you're calling me about work things, it's, it's summer, the economic development director and, you know, so we, we have to take off our hats and stuff. So no, I don't, I don't feel that. I think that's a part of being in a small town, but I don't, I don't want you to think that you in any way, actually, no, you do. I've never had any of the counselors so far that abused me in that fashion. Thankfully.
Good to hear. That was the last of my inquiries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Bradley?
Um, I don't have anything too much right now, other than the only, the only thing I could think of that causes me a little concern is that we actually have a hot button issue. Is there a way to make sure that we, you know, we end up with like 50 citizens wanting to speak? That we have a way to make sure we can accommodate that?
And I think the way to accommodate that is it becomes an agenda item. And not just something, somebody comes in, in that public forum. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. And that would be the, well, because I do, I think the, if we get 50 people showing up, they need to be heard.
Something's wrong.
Yeah.
Counselor Pagano?
Um, I really like the idea of having the ordinance readings right after the public meetings. Council rule nine, I will go along with whatever everybody else agrees. Number 10 as well. I really like 17. I think that should be, that's a really good one. And 22, I think that's a good one as well.
Okay. So may I have permission from the council to come up with a new version with the city attorney and bring it back to you?
Yes.
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 Okay. I will do that. What is next? I'll flip my paper back over. Ah, the financials. I was going to recommend we move that to next month because we just got them. Maybe by then we'll have the current audit. Never know.
Oh, in, I think in email, and I didn't expect you to, to sit down and read it cover to cover certainly, but I, I posted the, the audits, I think for the last five years in that folder. So not just the most current one, I, I said, oh, like the last five years.
Okay. Did you have anything else you wanted to update us on, Administrator? This is your, your report time.
Yeah. Um, obviously spent lots of time on the, the annexation thing, but I just wanted to ensure that we had everything in there. And I'm not going to say it out loud because I don't want to change it, but I just want to make sure everything was in there and safe and needed it. I'm trying to think what else that I've been working on other than that. That's pretty much it. Since Will is here on, on the call, he had a couple of public work things that since he's here, I think he also has to let you know. There were kind of big things that you might hear about, so just getting away, just to get it off.
Good evening again. Public Works, we've just, we've been just trying to keep the ship upright. And thankfully we've came through all the storms unscathed and the only things to note that have happened lately is we had a water main break at the Curry County Road Department last Thursday that was significant. But crew got all called in and we took care of it in quick fashion and got everybody back in water in the afternoon. Been installing some equipment at the water treatment plant that's part of our upcoming upgrades. I decided to purchase the equipment and get it installed right now. That way we don't pay it for 30 times over with a loan. So just completed the installation yesterday of some new turbidometers. That's approximately $11,000 worth of new technical monitoring equipment, replacing the 21-year-old pieces of equipment we had that were beginning to wear out. We are going to be sending up a bid for the large pipeline project. And that will be going out on February 24th. And so we've got a calendar that looks like you'll be seeing the outcome of those bids in April at the council meeting. And so hopefully we'll have some good, solid competitive bids that you'll be able to, you know, take a peek at that and it'll be obvious who the winner is going to be. But large project, about three and a half May. So we look forward to seeing what the contractors think it's going to cost to replace the pipes that we have called out in there. Those are the, those are the big things that are going on in public works for the last month or so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Administrator Fritz?
Oh, that's all I have for now.
Okay. Then we will go to Counselors' comments, starting with Counselor Madison.
Got it. Honestly, I really don't have many updates. Somebody from LOC contacted me, a journalist, a writer for LOC a few weeks back, inquiring about the financial impacts of COVID on our community. And so I did share that and sent off some photos of activities in Gold Beach. And let's see, Dine to Stay is going really well in the city. And our restaurant owners are pretty happy to participate. And it's been just a real positive movement in our economy. Oh, one more thing. I have a grant coming out from CARES Act. Well, I don't, but CARES Act is coming out with a grant. And so the focus of this grant is less than 50 employees focusing on museums, event centers, theaters, do I say museums? Entertainment sectors that have been kind of left out of the other CARES Act funding opportunities. And there's also an emphasis on nonprofit, so I'm really excited about that. I've got that shared out there. It hasn't opened yet, but hoping everybody takes this opportunity to prepare so that when it does open, they're ready to apply. And I think that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bradley?
No, I think I'm good this month.
Counselor Pagano?
I don't have anything.
Counselor Campbell?
Happy Valentine's Day to everybody this month. That's about the only thing I could come up with.
Counselor McGilvery?
Back at you.
No, I'm, I'm too new to.
You're new to have a comment, huh?
Except that I'm glad to be here and thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Sadat has told me that she does not want to speak tonight. And Administrator Fritz is raising her hand.
I just wanted to say that Counselor McGilvery, I, I know that I, I dumped a little kind of a quote on you and I'm so sorry that you probably had to run away screaming in your first meeting, but normally annexations are not that keen. Usually they're just really small little packets, but that one ended up being horrific. So, so I don't want that to scare you off. It's normally not that bad.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And, and for my comments tonight, I got a little message today that this is Black History Month. And I figured now that I'm a mayor, I should probably find out why we have things like that. And I looked into it and Black History Month was first recognized by President Ford in 1976. It was a time to recognize the contributions and achievements of Black Americans. It's also an opportunity for people to learn more about the effects of racisms and the impacts it's had on our society. And so I decided to pick a, a figure that in history and, and talk a little bit about one. And so I picked Mary McLeod Bethune to highlight tonight. And she was a strong character that did make a difference in our world. And much to my surprise, she's credited with one of my favorite quotes. And it's without faith, nothing is possible. With it, nothing is impossible. I've always liked that quote, but I never knew where it came from. She was born in 1875. Her parents were slaves. They had 17 children and she was number 15. I can't imagine 17 children. After the Civil War ended, her family had purchased property from their former owner. And by the time she was nine years old, she could pick 250 pounds of cotton a day. She was able to obtain an education, starting by walking five miles each way to a black school. She was the only one in their family that actually was educated, but she did try to help her brothers and sisters learn to read. She then a day obtained scholarships for higher education. After she finished that, she wanted to be a missionary, but couldn't find a church sponsor to do that. So she decided to take a profession in education. While she did marry, he left her as a single mother and she had to fend for herself and her son. They never did divorce. He did die several years later and she did not remarry. So she's a single black woman entrepreneurial teaching people. And she was determined to succeed and I can't imagine doing that in the early 1900s. She helped fund a hospital for Black people and a beach for Black people because Blacks were not allowed on the beach in Florida. So they bought a two-mile stretch where Blacks were welcome. She was a civil rights leader for both Black rights and as well for women's rights. President Truman appointed her to the founding conference to the United Nations in 1945. She was the only woman of color. She helped found the Bethune-Cookman University in Daytona Beach. She's an author, businesswoman, and co-founded a life insurance company. She owns several businesses. She was a strong woman of color who led others to find the right way to treat each other in a time when it was not politically correct to do so. We live in a very white area here in Cold Beach, but let's remember to treat all people with the honor and respect that they deserve as humans, regardless of any differences we might have. And I'll close with another quote from Mary Bethune, and it's invest in the human soul. And I'll close with another quote from Mary Bethune, and it's invest in the human soul. Who knows? It might be a diamond in the rough. So with that, I will end. And is there any citizen left that would like to make a comment? We have another session for that. It looks like everybody has the ability to unmute. It looks like Zach and Cindy are the two left. We didn't bore them to tears.
Thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome. I, I want to try to say this, but I picked a strong woman in memory of my mom. And we do have an executive session, so I'm going to close the regular part of the meeting and ask our guests to leave. And I think maybe we should take a bathroom break and come back in about two or three minutes, five minutes. Is that all right with everybody?
Yes, appreciated.
Sounds good.
Works for me.
Administrator?
Okay, yeah, I can pause the recording. Okay.
Okay. Okay.